Please rise for the prayer and pledge of allegiance. Our Father.
Lord in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. Item C on the agenda is swearing in fire captain Jonah. How you pronounce your last name?
Sturz.
Sturz, all right.
I didn't try to replace him. Did you hear what I did this morning on the radio?
No, I didn't.
Just talking with Mr. Clark about tonight. He said we had new fire chief, I mean, sorry. So, just completely, completely. Usually when I do this, I tell people they're joining a good organization, but you already are, right? And I tell them to do what they're told and they'll be just fine. Now, you have to tell people what to do so they're just fine, right? You've been hearing off, you know what I tell people and they start, right?
Yep.
Don't be stupid. I don't know if things go in there, I don't know if that's called because it isn't stupid, right? So it's up to you to make sure that people that work with you don't do stupid. Right? A lot of support. If they're who you are, just other captains offer advice. Soak it up, dig it up, right? Okay. How are you?
Good.
You can pin him on?
Yeah, I'm gonna try not to poke him.
Oh, no, poke him!
No, I'm not that one.
No? Okay. All right. I state your name.
I, Joel Sturz.
Do something to swear.
Do something to swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And the charter ordinances and resolutions.
And the charter ordinances and resolutions.
Of the city of Napoleon, Ohio.
The city of Napoleon, Ohio.
And the laws of the state of Ohio.
And the laws of the state of Ohio.
And faithfully discharge and perform.
And faithfully discharge and perform.
All duties that become upon me.
All duties that become upon me.
As captain of the city of Napoleon, Ohio Fire Department.
As captain of the city of Napoleon Fire Department.
According to the best of my ability, I understand.
According to the best of my ability, I understand.
I pull yours sign in this. Come back here. Do the official thing now. Okay, Sturz, I've already used two nice people out here with the cameras.
That's Jerry Devian, he's an instructor for the fire department.
Okay.
That's my mother, Krista.
Do you want us to go over here closer? You come inside here, get closer, absolutely. Come right, come right in through there, come right up in here. That's all right, he will go far.
Seven lines.
Brian, you good?
Yeah.
You little.
Go right in there.
Okay.
What do you want? Just like that?
Yes.
Perfect. There you go.
Just go this way just a little bit, that's a trash.
Get the trash out.
Okay, smile.
You good, Mom?
Yep.
Okay. Congratulations again. Any, any words of wisdom?
It's all my crew that makes me the captain I am, so, not me. It's the guys underneath.
Oh, and they're not here to hear what I'm saying.
They're out on our 12th call today, so. They take care of me, so.
I'm sure they want to offer your congratulations too.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yeah, you guys have to sit down. We're good. Everybody anymore. Shut that thing off. Does that keep us hands above waist?
All these sorts of things for Kevin.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful night.
Okay, moving on to item D, approval of minutes from September 7th, 2021, regular council meeting. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved. They stand approved. Item E, citizen communication, if there's anyone in the audience out there other than Chad, or that may be on WebEx that would like to address council and anything other than what's on the agenda, please go ahead and type in the chat and we will periodically take a look at that. Okay, moving on to item F, reports from council committees. F1 Electric Committee met on September 13th, 2021 and accepted the BOPA recommendation to approve the September 2021 PSCAF as three-month average factor .00782 and JV2 .028525. Item F2 Water Sewer Refuge Recycling Litter Committee meeting for September 13th was canceled. F3 Municipal Properties Building Land Use Economic Development Committee met on September 30th, 2021. Molly?
Yes, we were recommending to approve stop signs at the intersection of Bales Road and West Moreland and also to double the amount currently being reimbursed by the city for the sidewalk and curb replacement program, capping it off at a budgeted amount of $25,000.
Thank you, Molly. And F4 Parks and Rec Committee did not meet tonight due to lack of agenda items. All right, going down to item H, introduction of new ordinances and resolution. H1 Resolution Number 036-21, a resolution approving the addition of a $50 surcharge to city of Napoleon, Ohio Employee Health Insurance premiums for the years 2022, 2023, 2024, and amending resolution number 033-20 and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we got Molly and Jeff there. All right. Anybody who wants to take this one? Mr. City Manager here?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, this is to recommend the $50 surcharge that the Healthcare Cost Committee talked about in the past. It also is for the extension of the contract with BORMA and our, and their wellness program.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or additional comments regarding this? Hearing none, Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to item H2 Resolution Number 037-21, a resolution authorizing a community reinvestment area CRA agreement with Keller Logistics Incorporated with Napoleon CRA Number 7 and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
Acting City Manager?
Nothing really to change since the last council meeting. Things are moving along. I think Joel's on right now, but I don't, as of this morning, there was nothing new to report.
All right.
The way the packet looked to me, everybody signed except us. So I think Brian, Mr. Keller signed, I think the school board signed, so.
Good. Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Who owns that land or who, that corn that's in there right now?
They won't start the corns out.
Whose is it?
Whoever we rent to.
Okay.
Yeah. It's September 24th.
Okay.
They're not gonna start turning ground until... This is the first reading, we do two more reads. It's now our end of October, so.
Okay.
Just wondering, yeah.
I would assume you have a contract with some farmer to...
I would assume.
That he pays you cash rent, that's what he has. That's typically how it is.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, moving on to H3 Resolution Number 038-21, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds over $25,000 for the implementation of an upgrade of the Washwater Basin controls, which was not included in the 2021 master bid resolution for the city of Napoleon, Ohio Water and Wastewater Treatment Plants and the sole source said implementation to Kester Corp. And declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Chief?
Chad, you want to speak on this?
I can. I just know a lot because I've met Jeff and Holly.
Yeah, I thought he would be here tonight.
The water treatment plant superintendent Jeff Leese came to me to ask me, apparently their controls weren't included in the budget and they had to get it in this year. However, all of our controls have been done for the last five years or so by Kester Corporation. The expenditure is gonna be over $25,000. I explained to him that if he gave a memo to legal or met with legal that because Kesters has been doing all of our programming and we need all the programming at the water treatment plant to match, and Kesters is currently doing all of our programming at the wastewater treatment plant, that that would be my reasoning for requesting that to be reviewed by legal, believing it could be done. I don't wanna speak for the law department, but that was the request. And since it was over $25,000 and it wasn't on the master bid ordinance, he had a grant count of the legislation. So he's kinda, he's trying to be both at the same time.
Billy, have anything to add or?
I mean, that was pretty well said as far as my knowledge of the background facts go. We did review it and based on the things that he said in here, that was Jeff, right? Came in and described the reasoning and council believing it to be in the best interest of the city to go with Kester sufficient to forego the bidding process. So that's what this legislation does, along with the budgeting stuff.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Item I, second readings of ordinances and resolutions, we have none. Moving on to item J, third reads of ordinances and resolutions. J1 is ordinance number 031-21, an ordinance authorizing an economic development agreement between the city of Napoleon, Ohio, the Community Improvement Corporation of Henry County, Ohio, and Keller Logistics Incorporated regarding the construction of an industrial building within the city of Napoleon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Chief, have anything on this one?
Uh, one thing, uh, just the closing date still needs to be scheduled on that from what I got from Joel this morning.
Okay.
But it, there was nothing else that he stated he needed on this.
Hold on, Joel, turn the volume up here on it, Joel. Try again, Joel.
Hey, everyone.
There you go.
There you go.
So, for this particular ordinance, this being third read, there hasn't been any changes. We'll, we'll schedule the closing date for the end of October. And that, that kinda coincides, we're waiting for the school board approval to agree with the CRA agreement to city council. So it's, that's why it's coming after the fact like this. But just to keep it moving forward, we have the development agreement. So once this is signed, we'll be able to schedule a closing date, which we'll, we'll anticipate for the end of October. And then, you know, barring no, no issues with the CRA agreement, like everything we've talked about, if it goes three reads, that should be, I believe, October 18th. So if it's October 18th, then we can close at the end of October and then we can proceed with his project. That's all I have.
Thank you, Joel. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. And that has passed on third read. Moving on to item J2 Resolution Number 032-21, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to acquire 12.91 acres of land located within the city of Napoleon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Council President, in your packets was an updated information from the city manager that had some updated quotes on it and what that total value of the property would be per acre. So from the packet, it's approximately $18,669 an acre, roughly, a little bit lower than what he anticipated.
Joel, you have anything to add on this?
Yeah, Chief, can you pull up the memo?
Yep.
That was heated on screen.
Two down from that, Chief.
Oh, also one, the memo with update.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yep, that's it, that's it, there it is. So, um, we believe it's Fermi Corp. engineers this jurisdiction. We add detail to a new delineation. New delineation actually shows less acreage, but in terms of category one wetlands, you have to, to be able to mitigate it, it's a one to one and a half ratio. So for every one acre of wetlands you have, you have one and a half acres you have to mitigate. So that raises the total to about two and a half acres. We're, we're looking at figures right now of about 48,000 per acre. That was, you know, the conservative value. And that's, and that, that is congruent with some of the figures that we had gotten ODOT when they looked at this. And then if you go down to the map, just kinda show where the, where the acreage is. Well, I guess we can go through the numbers first. Sorry about that. So this is, this, some of this is actual, some of this is, you know, estimates, like the property cleanup. I'm not really sure, you know, how much is left on the property they have cleaned up. But there is some, some items were, were actually, some of it was cleaned up. So hoping that that's a very conservative number and that, that actually comes down. But I think the rest of it's pretty close and pretty aligned with where it will end up being. Agency permit fees, I, I just don't have an answer on that right now and what, you know, what, what the process is. And, you know, this is kind of a refresher for me too. So a lot of the rules have changed from the last time I've, I've built the wetlands and mitigation. So it's just a, you know, you know, like looking at a new set of rules all over again. So just, you know, follow the process though. It's, it's not, not a lot has changed in the, in the permitting process. So the application will go in and everything else and it'll take some time. Probably about, you know, a lot of people are still working for the board. So, you know, six months to a year, usually it's about six months. But I think in this case, we're probably going to be closer to a year. But I don't think the, the costs are gonna change from that. So we go down to the map real quick and just kinda... The, the first map that we had from, from ODOT was really, really, really rough. In this case, they actually went out and kinda pinpointed exactly where the delineation was at. So you can see the lines are a lot more, a lot wavier. So he did a, a lot, a lot more accurate, way more accurate representation. So this, this is where it's at. You know, it's not, it's not the ideal situation. I, I just, you know, the thing, my recommendation still stays the same. There's a lot of opportunity and then, you know, for the city, whether it be expansion of the solar field because all the infrastructure's right there. You know, I'm at the M conference right now, we just had our board meeting today. There's a lot of funding out there for, you know, green infrastructure, or not green, but green, green energy and, and clean energy that, you know, we could potentially tap into. So I mean, there's, there's definitely opportunities on that end. There's opportunities in having ODOT revisit this property again for, if they are interested in fact, in, in doing something with it. And then there's also the, just, you know, holding it for future economic development too, since we are doing the old Keller's Logistics. There's this property that can be obtained through this transaction cleaned up and, and legitimately, and I say, you use the word legitimately, ready for development. You know, doing the mitigation is gonna be difficult for anybody that, that wants to come into this property. So it's, you know, give or take. I mean, it's, it's not a, it's not a do or die situation by any means, but I think, I think in the end, at the end of the day, I think, I think that's, that's why I'm holding my recommendation. I think that this is just the best way to go about it. So we don't have foul land within the city borders. We'll, we'll take a leadership position to, to get it cleaned up, mitigated, and ready for development for whatever that purpose is. And that's all I have, in case, unless anybody has any questions.
Anybody questions? Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
No.
Even with the quorum being four, three, one, still good.
Okay.
Can I, can we talk about that for a sec?
Sure.
If I can get the rules out here real brief. I hadn't expected that because I just was at that rule, sorry.
That's okay.
Rule 6.3, and I'll just read it, sorry. Except as may otherwise be provided in the charter and/or rule 6.2 regarding certain subject matter, blah, blah, blah. This is an important, let's see. Ordinances and resolutions shall be valid and effective when enacted or passed by the affirmative vote of majority of the current members of council. So on the first one through, it looks like we got four. On this one, it's not talking about a quorum either, I don't believe. Certainly if not for the emergency clauses that are attached to both of these third reads. So it looks like each ordinance and resolution shall be read on three separate days unless dispensed with by an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the current members of council. Readings shall be by title only. Council may pass an ordinance or resolution as an emergency measured by the affirmative vote of two-thirds or more of the current members of council. So.
Two-thirds or more, it's, it has to be of members of council.
Members of council is the way it's written.
Not a quorum.
Not a quorum, no. And so, um... Give me just a sec. Rox, do you have anything to add on this one?
Other than the... Two-thirds of all members is five.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't pass anything with, with suspension tonight.
Or with emergency.
Or with emergencies, what he said too. I just said two-thirds.
So I think if we're, if we're set on passing these tonight, the emergency clause is out. So if we wanna leave the emergency clause on, I would, and I'm sorry, I didn't get to the first one, but after we started the vote on 31, it got me thinking that we've only got four people here.
Let me ask a question. If we... Can we, even though this is the third reading, can we move this to another, to the next meeting?
I think what we've done on 31 with the economic development agreement, I'm not certain that the emergency clause is necessary since we're still working on the CRA.
Right.
The emergency, so it'll take effect 30 days afterwards anyway. And so it'll be there in time without the emergency clause. On 32, however, with a 3-1 vote, I'm not even certain that we've... I believe we've, it's passed, but at this point, I, the emergency clause is out, is my understanding, reading says three. So I don't know if that puts delays in the process that are not wanted, but it's...
No, because I think the purse agreement goes to the end of the year. So they're okay then.
Okay. I just wanted to, to clear things up on, because as we were talking, I'm trying to read 6.3.
Okay.
Because I'm worried, and it vaguely jogged my memory.
Okay, then, then would you feel better if we were to table?
So on...
Now we're taking a vote, so now we're really in the weeds now.
Yeah, no, I think we've voted at this point.
Okay.
I, I think we've passed both, but the emergency clause in, in both of those pieces of legislation is out, in my opinion. Not that it's necessary, I don't think, but I think we'll have to wait the 30 days, given that we only have four people here today. Just wanted to interject that, sorry.
Appreciate that.
Sorry, Joel. Mess up your timing.
No, that's perfectly fine. So.
That's what it's gonna be changed.
In, in either way, it's, it's, whatever the council wants to do, it's fine. It's just, 30, 30 days doesn't disrupt or, or delay anything.
Before signing, just take the emergency first.
Mayor's correct. It's, if we could go to the upper acceptance goes to the end of the year. Do you have anything else? It's, it's not gonna disrupt the process here.
And I'll get you guys a copy without the emergency clause attached.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item K, Good in the City. K1 is Discussion or Action Approval of September 2021 PSCAF as three-month average factor .00782 and JV2 .028525. Joel or Chief have anything to add on this one?
Uh, usage was a little bit down from previous years, but, you know, our, our supply cost adjustment factor is still way down compared to those previous years because of our, our policy.
Which equals lower rates, correct?
Yep, that's, that, that is correct.
All right. Okay, any questions or comments on this? Just need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay. Item K2 Discussion or Action Stop Signs at the Intersection of Bales Road and West Moreland. Chief?
This is one in front of, in front of you guys. It's been part of our safety plan with the schools, the safe routes to schools. We have some estimated costs somewhere between 25 and 2,500 and maybe 5,000, depending on what options you go with. From personal experience there, that intersection backs up significantly to any traffic that's southbound, it backs all the way into the school property and will clog that intersection up every day, a couple times a day. So it definitely, although it's still, you're still gonna see backups, it's gonna be, I correlated to Washington and, and Glenwood or Woodlawn and Glenwood, where at least it's moving, at least it's rotating. I, I think you will be slowing down traffic that's coming into town because they're going to get, they're going to have a stop sign instead of just coasting in the town from the 55 mile an hour zone as, you know, a lot of people are guilty of, is kinda coasting and then you're in the school zone almost immediately. So with due time, it will change driving habits in that area, is my, my belief.
Do you think we need stop signs there all the time or just during hours of school? So what I suggest is we, we put, we direct the law director to, to include traffic control, right, so we can change it down the road without having to redo necessary stop signs? And ex... And explore, I think we would stop signs up basically right away because they're the safest, and then we, how much is a, is a flashing light to go from yellow to red, from seven fifteen to eight thirty? You know, nine, and then again after school, nine months out of the year. We used to do that along West Washington and West Main, there were yellow lights, and then took school, they went to red and.
We can investigate that.
I know it's a weird, weird intersection because it's partly county owned and us, I just, I thought if we throw stop signs up right away, we get the help. I don't want to delay safe routes to school by trying to figure out if we want to do a light or not, I want to get something up there, but give ourselves the flexibility to, to change it if we need, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
What, what do we?
We can look at, I'm only concerned that close to a school, if you have differing traffic patterns depending on the day and the time, it's difficult to get people to adjust.
Okay, I'm just.
We, we can look at what those costs might be, and I would like to discuss it with police chief.
Right.
And other stakeholders in this.
I understand, I just think if we put, if we put traffic control.
Gives us.
And stop, stop signs, you know, basically, as soon as we can, as soon as we're comfortable with it, then we do that, but yet leave ourselves the ability to put up a light if that's what we need.
That's fine, that just, we would have to.
I thought that's what Monica told us that day.
Those are traffic lights, those were red, yellow, green, these are.
No, no.
That, no, that's.
Four way corners.
What's that?
The four way corner of Norton and Washington Street, that's why they took them down and says, we can't use them anymore. Norton and Washington. The signs themselves. No, we had a light there.
There's the flashing.
Red flashing light.
Yeah, but I think the one she meant we couldn't put on was just the old traffic light, because we had one on West School and.
Claremont.
Claremont, yeah, thank you.
Woodlawn and Claremont area.
My, my concern, prior to the meeting last week, I had two different parents approach me about either doing something like the, the freeway stop or no left turn, those kind of things, and I had shared that with Joel, and then, of course, it ended up in the committee. Ironically, after the meeting, and it was in the newspaper, I have two other people saying that that's going to create a hazard, of course, by putting a stop sign up there. One of my biggest concerns is, part of this safe route to school thing is the sidewalk on Jan's Road, which is next year, to my understanding. I don't know if that's going to have more kids walking, which would be coming out of those subdivisions over there and trying to get through that intersection. I think that's a bigger concern to me than even the traffic, I understand what the chief's saying, and I don't disagree with you, but I'm afraid some kid's going to get hurt there too, trying to cross that intersection.
With stop signs, without?
Without.
Without, yeah.
Without.
Yeah.
So, like I say, I've had people on both sides of this issue talk to me, and not in a negative fashion, but just both sides of that issue. And, like I say, but I'm just concerned it's going to create even a bigger hazard if we don't have something there. You know, if you do no left turn, that creates a whole.
Yeah.
Whole nutter ball wax, I'm assuming, Molly?
Yeah, and, you know, even since they put in those sidewalks by the baseball field, now there's a crosswalk there that doesn't show on this map.
Which is down a little ways from the intersection.
Which is down a little ways, so it would at least slow traffic up, because I do see families taking that.
Yeah.
To school now, so.
And that's my fear, is somebody's waiting on, waiting, 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 they gun it because there was open spot in traffic, next thing you know, they're face to grill with the kids going to school, so. I think we should put something in there, I think we should leave ourselves open to do an explore, I'm not saying stop signs and then be done, that's, that's what I'm saying.
I agree.
Explore costs, I know the, the flashing stop signs you talked about were the most inexpensive, and I think, Chad, I think you were talking to, to county engineer Shum about. And I don't want to speak for him, but I, I would imagine that he's all for safety too, so I would think that he'd kind of be okay with it. Again, I'm not going to speak for him, I'm not wholly against him, so.
I got a verbal approval from him on if we, if we decide to move forward with stop signs.
Okay, and just give ourselves the option of, because I don't even know what, I didn't go drive through there enough to, to go, look, there's power there, there's already a street light there, I don't know that. You know, is, is that flashing yellow to red going to cause more issues with changing traffic patterns? That's, that's a great question for Chief and Chief and Chad and to look at, but I think we're going to put something up as soon as possible, because it's, it's not working the way it's currently designed.
And the pedestrians crossing that area is not just limited to the before and after school, because I've walked that way from two different football games already, it's dark and there's issues.
And you're going to see that during the baseball and softball timeframe, soccer timeframe.
Yep.
I mean, it's pretty much year round when schools in process or in, in, in progress, you're going to see that pedestrian concerns. As far as changing traffic patterns, that's always a dilemma, you know, we've had to do that a couple of times at different intersections. You know, obviously, if you've decided to move forward with this, this would be a, a heavy appearance, you know, visual appearance there to try and help with that education, but not heavy handed. You know, we definitely want to make sure we're monitoring the scenario and, and keeping things safe and trying to draw more attention to slow people down there. You know, I'm certainly not talking citations, I'm just talking high visibility there.
Yeah, yeah.
If we do the, the signs, just the stop signs, how much, Chad, how much more would it be if we did put the stop ahead signs on both sides and permanently?
That would be insignificant cost, we would definitely.
Because I'd like to see that, because when we did talk about the potential, you know, when there's ice and people going fifty five, let's give them a heads up well in advance before they see the stop sign.
Yeah, and the speed limits would dictate the spacing, obviously, the end of town at fifty five mile per hour, that sign would have to be set farther back.
Right.
Thirty five, coming from the east to the west, you could have it a little closer, but we'd also look at the topography to make, because there are, there are some elevation differences out there.
Right.
We have to make sure the site distances are correct, but yeah, there would need to be stop ahead signs. And we would also temporarily have to have, they have a science of changing traffic pattern, we have to put those up as well.
Right, okay. Thank you.
I'm assuming that's a legislation piece, isn't it?
I think it's a simple motion, I don't think that to install.
Is it the legislation?
To install stop signs, I don't think.
What, what I would need, if, if there is a motion to move forward with this, and I know one question that was brought up, if it's something we want to do now or wait for the safe routes to schools funding, but that project won't be until twenty twenty four.
Yeah, I want to do it now.
So, if we want to do it now, if you do direct us to do that, the legislation I would need is in the codified, we have a list of the stopped streets, we would have to adjust that list, just the same.
And we adjust that once a year anyways, don't we? Don't we look at that once a year anyways, Chad?
Unless we have a bunch.
Okay.
Yep, because we have to have it in there before the chief can.
Before us. Okay, okay.
So, we could, if we have a lot of parking changes, we go ahead and change it.
Right.
Something like a stop sign, we'd probably go ahead and update that list as soon as it took effect.
Okay.
Because that tells us when it's in effect.
My suggestion is do it as soon as possible, right, there's enough, it's not getting lighter in the morning, right, it's just not. I'm all for, I, I know it's, we may get a grant for twenty twenty four, I don't want to say, let's wait till twenty twenty four and somebody gets hurt between now and then. And we, we got somebody hurt because we don't spend twenty five hundred bucks or five thousand dollars to get this safer than it is right now, is my opinion.
And, and if it works for council, I can, depending on how you word your motion, I can afford with this coordinating with the county engineer, because I need to work with him as well. Because two thirds of that's in council, and that might dictate some of the schedule as well.
Yeah, I, I agree, if you may, and like I said, I'm concerned even with, with that additional sidewalk, which.
Yeah.
You know, I want.
Right.
That's coming next year.
Right.
And I think waiting is too risky.
So, if you direct the law director to draft legislation, I can get all Chad's language in there, and just draft the appropriate legislation, phrase it that way, and I'll talk to Chad, and we'll get the, the proper language in there.
So, can you touch, please?
Yes, sir. Somebody needs to make the motion.
Motion.
Second.
Did you get the full motion there? Thank you. Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Too much confusion, huh?
I just wanted to make sure she's okay, we could all just say yes, and I don't want to assume that Rox got it. All right, so, moving on to item K three, discussion or action, to double the amount currently being reimbursed by the city for the sidewalk and curb replacement program, capping the budgeted amount at twenty five thousand dollars.
Council president, one of the things that was noted is that this hasn't been adjusted since probably the nineties.
Late nineties.
Late nineties, and so they're just looking at updating the actual costs.
Okay.
And our programs that goes with that.
This one will require legislation because it's codified.
Okay, and we discussed this in the municipal properties committee the other day, and I think this will do a couple of things. One, I don't know if there's a lot of residents that even realize that we have this, if they have a sidewalk that needs repaired, they may not even know that we offered to, to pay a portion of it. So, I think that's number one, number two is if maybe they did know, but now they know we're, we're going to give them a little bit more, it may help people get some sidewalks repaired. And there's a lot of them out there that need repair, and my goal, and I think everybody in municipal properties out there, and we're talking, is to try to get more of our, our sidewalks repaired. They look nicer and safer.
And curbs.
And curbs, yes.
And there's a direct correlation between sidewalks that are able to be traveled in all conditions to, and people in the roadway.
You're right.
Yep.
Exactly. Okay, so we need a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation to double the amount.
I'll motion.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item K four, discussion or action on PC two one dash one zero, final plat approval, Lynn Field Estates subdivision. You, sir?
Plan commission met on Tuesday, we did a plat already for the Lynn Field Estates, there's one small modification from the previous one to this one. There's a little, a little part of ground north of Lynn Avenue that was not included in the last plat, that actually does belong to condo association. And because of that, they had to, they had to replat it, basically, that's what this basically is. They're still trying to develop the, the homes along, is it Claremont?
Yes.
Is that the one I'm thinking of, yeah, the homes will own Claremont first, and after those are done, then they'll start in the next piece. The agreement still states that the, if Lynn Avenue is ever going to connect, there's, there'll be a house that will not, that'll be the last lot sold. And only gets sold after all the lots are done, and as long as St. Paul agrees to it, they never put Lynn, Lynn Avenue through, so, that's down the road, that, that's still part of the agreement. And it passed Plan Commission, Ansley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate that. Could I have a motion for approval?
A motion.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. All right, that's been approved, item K five, discussion or action, award of Overhouse interception and interceptor and reduction project, L T C P project number two zero eight. Chief?
Thank you, Council President, on Wednesday the fifteenth, the bids were opened, I'm going to defer to Chad, because he was there for that.
As Chief stated last Wednesday, we opened the bids for the Overhouse Interceptor High and High Reduction Project, this project is phase two of the Overhouse System. Essentially, it will replace the Overhouse Interceptor, starting where phase one ended, which was along Overhouse Creek at Woodlawn, just immediately west of Claremont. Travels behind the houses towards the west and comes back up to Woodlawn, down near Glenwood. The estimate, the engineer's estimate on the project was five hundred thousand dollars, we received six bids. The low bid was Benson Contracting LLC out of Fort Jennings, Ohio, having reviewed the bids and contacted references, it is my recommendation to award the project to Benson for four hundred thirty seven thousand eight hundred fifty five dollars.
Thank you, Chad.
They're from Fort Jennings, that you said, Chad?
Yes.
Where's the?
The only project they've done for the city of Nappoyan is they were the contractor that demoed the pool. They have done quite a bit of underground work for primarily communities in Putnam County, they have bid a few of our jobs, have never been successful, I called some of the references. The references said they did good work, some of the, I had comments from some of their peers, the most negative comment I would, I really received was that their equipment was old. I don't care. So, this job is set up, the contractors are not allowed to begin work before December fifteenth, because we had said this would be winter work, and I didn't want anyone that we had agreements with on the project to think that we were not honoring the, what they were told. And the completion date for the job is June eighteenth of next summer, so, hoping that we will have good weather in the spring to get a seat.
Anybody have any questions or comments on this? Billy, I have one question, can I vote on this, with me living on Woodlawn, and I am one of the residents, it's going to affect, with this just being the bid, I wasn't sure.
Um, off the top of my head, without looking at anything, I'd say it'd probably be safest to abstain.
Then we have enough.
I guess, hey, I'm not even the clerk, by the way. Certainly don't get paid to be the clerk, let's see.
Majority's four.
Yeah, but if we don't, if we have one person abstaining. I don't like the way this is worded, I know council rules is the, one of the topics for later, and maybe we think about.
Right.
Looking at some of this stuff.
Yeah, maybe reading through that.
This doesn't come up very often.
No.
Thankfully, no.
And, and my thought was, I mean, we're not, I'm not voting on, do I want this project to happen, or how much it's going to be, or how much they're going to buy easement or anything, it's just for who is going to do the work.
Yeah, if it's just on who's going to do the work, then I, I don't, the work is, doing or not doing the work is not being voted on currently, so, yeah, I believe you could probably vote.
Not what happens to me.
You go to jail.
Okay.
It makes it difficult to get business done, because the, the definition for quorum states just the majority of the current members of council, but the rules on passage. Make it clear, certainly for an emergency measure, you have to have two thirds of the current members of council, which we do not have.
Right.
Here. I mean, even, even the first part of six point three states, shall be valid and effective when enacted by the affirmative vote of the majority of the, of the current members of council, so. In a situation where it's four oh vote, like today, then I, it's, the way it's worded, it, it makes me think that the first one may have passed and that the second one potentially did not, third reads. And what to do in a situation like that, it's not something we've, we've encountered yet, so I'm not entirely sure. I'll have to look at that when we leave.
Okay.
So, I, I believe, what was it, thirty one?
Thirty two, twenty one.
So, yeah, so thirty one, I think you, I'll, I'll forward to Rox with the emergency removed, and then thirty two, I think, we'll have to, I'll have to talk. And then thirty-two, I think, we'll have to, I'll have to talk about it with Tammy, and then look at the rules a little further, and maybe even do a little bit of research. But because the way it's worded, it says shall be valid and effective when enacted or passed by the affirmative vote of a majority of the members of council. So when you got a three-one vote, just on the legislation itself, we don't have, we don't have that unless everybody votes the same way. So now what to do in a situation after that happens, let's say, I'm ninety percent certain that thirty-two didn't pass. What to do after that, I'd have to look at the rules again, and they may or may not be helpful in a situation where it's still approved three to one, but the third read did not have...
If it fails...
I'm not even certain that it would fail or pass.
If it, if you rule that it did not pass, can I do a reconsideration? I think it's part of something the mayor can do.
I do think so.
So what I would do then is I would offer it for reconsideration at the next council.
I think that's the best way to go. That's a good thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
Sorry about all the confusion.
No, thankfully, this is a rare occurrence, and there's only four members of council.
Yeah.
I know other, when you look at the ballot, a lot of other municipalities have trouble getting people to run for council. And we've been very blessed of, you know, typically having full seats, and that's why they have other current members of council, because you have somebody resigned.
Yeah.
Then the number's not seven, the number is six.
Yeah.
So it changes some of the math, so.
So what about this situation, can he?
So in this situation, because it's not, he's not deciding whether or not the work's gonna be done, this is something that doesn't really affect him, who does the work exactly. I think he can vote.
Right. I'll go with that.
If you had given me that information, I don't know, earlier today even, I could have looked at it for you, but...
Yeah, Rock's gonna be out.
I didn't know. Three of them were gonna be out too, so an hour before the meeting. Only knew about two then. Okay, so can we have a motion to award the overhouse project?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item K six, discussion or action, Van Hating Pump Station Replacement Project.
Council President, in 2020, this was on bids, it was bidden, we didn't receive any bids, is my understanding.
None that we could award.
And so at that point, it was for, it was left off the master bid ordinance for this year, so we wouldn't need legislation if you chose to go forward with that.
Yeah, we just need to draft law director, to draft legislation for this.
Correct.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, item K seven, discussion or action on staff's recommendation to have trick-or-treat on Sunday, October thirty-first, 2021.
May I, Council President?
Yes, sir.
I've been getting a lot of questions about this. The last time the Parks and Rec Board met, they didn't have a quorum to be able to make a recommendation to city council. So because of all the meeting queries, I requested this be put on the agenda so that it could be settled once and for all. There are a lot of organizations that have been calling in, asking and planning for events around, centered around Halloween. So that's why it's on the agenda now and not directly a recommendation.
All right, thank you, Joel, and I'll just, remembering back, when I was on the Parks and Rec Board, there's a few members that have been on there for years and years, and I recall them saying that they will always have it on October thirty-first, unless there's some, you know, major region. So I don't wanna speak for all of them, but I just know that's, that's their goal, is to always have it on Halloween.
Council President, may I?
Yes.
It's Wednesday, Friday, Saturday. If Halloween, October thirty-first falls on a Wednesday, Friday or Saturday, they usually recommend, if it's on a Wednesday, they recommend it on a Tuesday. If it's on a Friday or Saturday, they recommend it on that Thursday. And the reason is because of church services and football on Fridays.
Okay. Thank you.
Usually, so if anything changes from that, there's no written policy on it.
Right.
So that's kind of the general guideline.
I do know the Lions Club is looking to coordinate the Halloween parade at Buckaminder Stadium on Monday, the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, okay.
Is what they're looking for. I think they had a rep that was gonna get ahold of the Parks Director, too.
And Chief Mack, what's your feeling, I mean, with it being a Sunday, are you no concerns for you on that date?
No, Council President, I thank you, but no, there's no concerns. The traffic patterns are usually pretty, you're probably one of the best nights to have something, in all honesty. Staffing-wise, just like any other special event for us, we'll deal with the staffing issues internally.
All right, thank you.
Staring at you, Council Commissar.
I, I don't know why we can't have it on a Saturday night. Why would you wanna get these kids all worked up on Sunday? And then they gotta get up and go to school the next day.
I would tell you, one thing that I had heard from people is why not to do it on Friday and Saturday also is because of possibly people watching football games throughout the day, drinking and driving. There's probably more of that on a Saturday with college football starting at noon and things. Just makes it safer on the streets to not have it on a Saturday evening. I see both chiefs nodding their heads.
Then back up to Thursday, the twenty-eighth.
But if I may?
Yes.
Council President, I think your point is that you get them amped up and they gotta go to school the next day. That doesn't solve that by going into Thursday.
Right, they go to school on Friday.
Yeah.
And they're done at seven-thirty.
And then you have to fight with getting them out of school, getting them ready.
Right.
This way, Sunday, most families are home.
Yes. That's a good point. A lot of parents working till five, five-thirty, who knows when they can get home, and then trying to get the costumes on and getting out there.
Can I ask a stupid question?
There are no stupid questions here, Dan.
What happens if it pours down, like a monsoon?
We can make up on Monday, then? Because we won't know beforehand to change it.
I have a lot of candy left over.
I mean, it was raining a couple of years ago, and I had, yeah, but I didn't know if there was ever a case where they would cancel.
Council President, is that bad?
Yes.
This was addressed last year by the Parks and Rec Board, I believe, I think it was, maybe it was the year before, where this had come up with, you know, is there a rain date? And that starts to become a little nebulous for, and this was a discussion at the board level. You know, when, when do you make, who makes that decision and when? You know what I mean? And that's where they said, no rain or shine, no rain date, trick-or-treat night is on this night, that was the recommendation.
So Kevin's hoping for a rain night, huh?
That's a good point.
Okay, I've done enough thinking. We'll just leave it on thirty-first and be done with it.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
All right, thanks, Jeff.
A second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, item K eight, discussion or action, review of city council rules. Well, I didn't want this to go the way it did today, where we had to refer to this, but this is one of the reasons why I put this on the agenda because I think we all could use a refresher and not just count on our law director to have every answer at the top of his head for the moment. So apologize for putting you on the spot, or clerk of council as well. There was one thing that made me look this up the other day. Just reading section four-point-two, right of floor. It states, "When any member is about to address council, the member shall respectfully address themselves to the presiding officer, and when recognized by the chair, shall confine themselves to the question under debate, avoid personalities, refrain from, and plunging the motives of any other member's argument or vote." It goes on a little bit more. The reason this popped up in my head the other day is after last Monday's committee meetings, I was not the presiding officer. Molly was for one meeting, and Lori for the other, and I wanted to apologize because I felt like when efficiency smart was here, I was having the conversation as if I was a presiding officer, and that wasn't my place to do so. And I think in municipal property, same thing, kinda feel like I'm doing this all the time, most of the time, and I wasn't doing what the rules state of me asking, you know, Chair, is it okay if I speak, something like that. So it got me kinda thinking about, I think, I'd like to just leave this on this agenda, maybe for the next couple of meetings. Have all of us review, review it over time, and if there's anything in here that maybe we want changed, or somebody else wants to point out and say, hey, we need to follow our rules a little bit closer. That's, that's my whole point of putting it on here.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
The ad hoc committee that we formed in 2017 was never technically disbanded. So if council wanted to review the rules in some detail, you would need to, because I think it was Jeff Myers and Travis, and I think you as well were on, were on that committee, reviewing the rules. If you wanted to appoint two new members, you could do that, because the committee still exists, the ad hoc committee still exists, so that council's not bogged down with discussion of the rules every, at every council meeting.
Right.
If there needed to be some changes, certainly that, that committee could make a recommendation.
Okay, could we table this till next meeting? That way, it gives everybody a chance to kinda review them, and maybe somebody is gonna be like, hey, I really wanna be on that committee, and they feel passionate about, you know, doing that?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, it's about fourteen pages. We can use a copy. It should be in the packet.
Yeah, but I am wondering if I can, how much paper it's gonna take to print it off.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have any comments or anything today after at least discussing this?
It's a habit, right? Because I did the same thing with my property, with my props, you know, questions I got asked, and I catch myself going, someone, no, stop. Look at the chair and go, can I talk? Catch yourself doing that, and it's nothing on purpose, it's something, you know, it's not, but it's a habit. I'm trying to break too, so it's a good reminder, so.
Any other comments or questions?
Nope.
All right, move on to item K nine, discussion or action, third quarter budget adjustments.
I would defer to Kevin.
Kevin?
This is just something that's done every quarter.
Yep.
Where there's some line items that were over, that will be budgeted on, so we would continue to look at that every quarter. I would just have this go to committee for review. Just, there's about eight items on the list right now. I would say one of the items is, there's nothing too serious on this from my review, but one of them that is interesting is like bank service charges is over. And that's probably because the revenues of both the golf course and the pool have been very well, and more people are using credit cards. So that's just unique in that matter, but I would ask that this be referred to, to committee.
Okay, all right.
Do you have that, go to the financing budget piece?
Thank you.
Next Monday?
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Item K ten, discussion or action, acceptance of five-hundred-dollar cash donation from Mike Foreman, with two-hundred-and-fifty dollars going to the police and two-hundred-and-fifty to fire. Chief?
Council President, as many of you know, Mike Foreman's ex-employee, retired employee of this city. He was a police officer for many years. One of his retirement things is he's got a business called Vibration Craze, Moving All Ages. And on nine-eleven, he was doing, I guess, a DJ service over at the Legion, and he was able to raise five-hundred dollars for police and fires. He divided down the middle, two-hundred for myself and our department, and then the other two-hundred, I'm sorry, two-hundred-and-fifty, and then two-hundred-and-fifty for Chief Clayton in his department. And he presented that Friday afternoon to us.
That's awesome, that's good to hear. Okay, we have a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. All right, we'll go around the table here. Do you wanna start off? Do you have anything on top of your head that you wanna add?
No.
No?
Not at this time.
All right, Dan?
Mr. President, or Mr. Acting City Manager, or Mr. City Manager, wherever you are, is there anything for safety and human resources next Monday?
I do not have anything.
Not that I'm aware of. Chief?
Yeah, we don't have anything at this time.
Okay, I will.
If anything changes, we'll let you know, but at this point, there's...
Well, thanks, sir. For right now, we will call off that meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
That's all?
All right. Oh, Molly, you get to go before the mayor.
Oh, nothing's changed, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Go ahead, thanks.
Nothing, okay, go ahead. Mr. Mayor.
Kevin, welcome. Your first official council meeting.
Thank you.
Northwest State Community College has invited any of us that wanna go to a state of the college address at eight AM on Thursday, September the thirtieth. I am not able to go. If you are, please let me know, and I'll get your RSVP in by the twenty-third. So I gotta know by this Thursday if you're available next Thursday. And the CIC annual meeting is probably not gonna be as previously discussed. They're having a hard time getting enough people to have a critical mask for that. So if I think of another way to have their annual meeting, it's probably not gonna be as previously discussed. That is all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey?
I have nothing.
Okay, Billy?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Chief?
I've been told to keep my mouth shut. By my wife.
I was gonna say, she's not even, she's sent you a text. All right, Joel, do you have anything for us?
No, you'll see it in the weekly FYI with the, from the AMP board meeting today. There's, it's pretty quiet, except on the legislative front and on the AMP transmission front. So we're, a lot of activity in both of those committees, everything else is pretty, pretty average.
All right. Yep, thank you. All right, let's add a couple of questions, one for you, Chad. What is going on at, like, near Rite Aid there?
Private individual bought the property and wants to, wanted to build the property. Other than that, I don't believe there's any, there's no plan as far as they develop.
Okay.
But they wanted to raise it for potential future development.
Oh, all right. Thank you. I had three different people ask me about it within like a one-hour period last week, and I'm like, I don't know.
I see a lot of comments online about it, and they're all wrong.
Yes, I read those too, so, but thank you, I appreciate that.
Stuff on land is wrong? Like, what?
We'll figure.
Yeah. All right, also, Kevin, welcome.
Thank you.
Hopefully, your first week went well for you, and I see you made it back after a full week.
I came back on Monday.
Yes.
Everybody's been very helpful.
That's a really good sign. Another thing, I mean, since this is, you know, good of the city, I think there's some really... I think there's some really exciting news, things starting on this Wednesday is Lifewise Academy. Not sure if any of you are, are you familiar with that? But I don't know all of the ins and outs, but I do know a lot of churches have come together where they're offering some gospel teaching and some Christian teaching to children at public schools that can go to this facility, church where they're doing this. And I know they've been working on it for quite a while. And some of the information that I received is, is they're trying to help these kids that may not have the opportunity to, to get to know any, any religion at all. And some things I've heard from, I think actually, Dan here, the first ones, they're in Vanworth years ago.
It's a really big program down there, yes.
And, and the results later on for the city is having some kids that may not have went down the right path if they didn't go through with this. So it's really nice to see that these churches in Napoleon all got together. It didn't matter what denomination, they all got together and said, let's do something for these kids. And starting, I understand, this Wednesday. And that's all I have. Item L, executive sessions, we have none, much because Joel's not here. Item M, prove payment of bills. In the absence of any corrections or objections, a payment of bills shall stand approved. Stand approved. I have a motion for adjournment.
A motion.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Billy, do we have enough to adjourn?
Yes.
Been rough if we didn't.
I don't know, is anybody voting?